Hello. Hi, Iman.
Hi Nikki, hi everybody.
Hey, everyone. Whoa, we are really so excited to be here. It is the end of, you know, the time we have together and it's an honor to be here with you all. And it has been an honor to be part of this conference throughout. It has filled me, you know, filled my cup. I have been grieving. I have been grieving. I have been tired. And you know, Iman and I are both moms of cute little ones. We are both in a lonely land in Oakland and our community is beautiful. If you've heard a lot of people from our community, but our community is also giving us a virus that makes all of our kids sick and we all, all our kids have the same things, it seems. So just know that we are here and, and we are delighted to be with you and you're giving us something today too. And today's conversation is about learning and evolving as we go. And as Iman and I were thinking about this theme, we were reflecting on yesterday's conversations. And some of the ones that came to mind for me were when Trish was saying, hey, we were invited to equity as the highest vision for our systems. And then many of us started feeling there are limitations to it. And Kyriishi named, you know, we're really living our values, our work should match and it should be evolving. There should be an openness. There should be a way forward. We shouldn't be carrying out the strategies and the, the, you know, only path forwards that we were put in place 20 years ago, 30 years ago, even 10 years ago. We need to be evolving with the times as well. That openness did the change and, and ways forward is something that really like captured and inspired me for today's conversation. And, and in that spirit, Iman and I were hoping to share with you how LLC, how Leadership Learning Community, that's the organization we're from, thinks about learning as a practice. We think about learning as a risk mitigation strategy. We also think about learning as a way to pre-figure the futures that we want to see in the future. And mostly, since we have a pretty like good group here, we wanted to invite a lot of interactions with you. The format might feel a little limited, so there's going to be a lot of interactions through the chat. So we hope that you'll join us there. And we also hope that we can maybe unmute a few folks. We can do that if you raise your hand in this platform, we can get you onto this panel situation too. And you can unmute and talk to us about some of the ideas you might have as well. So that's the invitation for this panel today. We want to invite you to do some time traveling with us as we figure out where we have been, where we are now, and especially where we are going together. And I think, and you know, I hope that you feel it with us, that building this context is how we understand how to live liberation. So I wanted to start with just a few introductions so you know who you're talking to today. First off, I'll just introduce myself and then I'm going to let my colleague Iman go. My name is Nikki Din. I go by she/her pronouns. I'm on a lonely land. Like we said, we're mothers from Oakland. And I am the daughter of refugees. And the charge of the daughter of refugees is to learn fast and then do and then share. This is our first time in America and my parents were illiterate. You know, they forage in the jungles. They survived not only the American war, but also the French, the Japanese, the Chinese occupations in Vietnam. So there's been a lot going on in my lineage. And my parents came here as both people refugees. They lived in refugees camps. And they got protective status to come to America, which is a privilege that many, many other refugees and migrants don't get today. But they did survive, you know, where 2 million people didn't survive that war that America brought into chemicals into and guns and big bombs into Vietnam. So I say that I'm grieving because a lot of what's happening right now is, is bringing up a lot for me from my family's history. And, and I also say that I am in joy with this community right here because you're also filling my cup in so many ways as a reminder of how my family also faced a lot of this trauma. We didn't face it like victims, you know, we faced it like people who still had our humanity. We still laughed. We still karaokeed. We still gathered and cooked food and we nourished each other until we were well enough to, to move past all of this. And so that's the, that's the context of evolving and learning as we go that I want to carry and continue on to learn fast, to survive and help others do the same, but really get to thriving, really get to the joy and the art and the beauty that life is really meant to provide for us. And if you're living in the States here with us, I know there's like, you know, folks from all over the world joining this conference. But if you're in the States, I hope that you feel that you are also seeking refuge in the valley of the beast as my family is. And so we do the systems work out of our deep love and care for our communities, right? We have to care about humanity and believe that humanity is still here. And so in this act of knowing ourselves and knowing the context in which we come from and then knowing, so like knowing where we came from, knowing where we are today, we can finally build out and understand our futures. All right, Iman, that's enough about me passing out to you.
Love to hear it all. Thank you, Nikki. Hi, everyone. I am Iman Mills Gordon, the Director of Liberatory Programs with Leadership Learning Community. I use she/her pronouns. I'm born and raised on a lonely land in Oakland, went to the East Coast for a little bit and then came back home as Nikki mentioned. So we are both here. And thinking on my intro with themes of evolution and learning, I'm going to pick up on some of what Nikki shared in hers. As many of us know, as a black person in America, learning to navigate the omnipresent systems that are designed to keep us down, to keep us out, has been baked into our culture and in some ways in our DNA for many generations now. We are people that scan, analyze and adapt, evolve to survive and to thrive. Me personally, my parents, my mother was a public school educator and my father, a trained lawyer who became a nonprofit leader. And they emphasized the value of education above all else. They also spoke to me daily, both explicitly and implicitly about the importance of each of us playing our part and pushing for our collective liberation. And then just me personally, I hold as a North Star the importance of leading most of my, all of my interactions with kindness and with love. And so with all of my hats, human, mother, daughter, partner, sister, friend, colleague, I just feel they require consistent learning and evolution just to keep up, especially with my kids who are always evolving. And then our work in this movement and specifically at LLC fits so well with my understanding of the importance of slowing down, to honestly reflect, to connect with others, to learn and to evolve together in order to get closer to the liberatory world that we all want to see. So I'm happy to be here with you today at the end or as we are nearing the end of two very rich days of living liberation and excited to continue to explore with you. As Nikki said, I'm hoping we can be interacting as much as the platform allows. And I feel like we have a nice sized group to do so. So with that in mind, let's start by doing a little more grounding in our shared space. We'll have more time for intros, traditional intros in a bit, but I would love if we could start with a check-in question. And as we said, feel free to use the chat or raise your hand so you can come off mute and we can hear your voice. We got this check-in question from Ayesha Schillingford of Intelligent Mischief. And we've also enjoyed hearing the responses whenever we bring them into one of our gatherings, whenever we bring it into one of our gatherings. So the question is, if everything you were fighting for was achieved and you could retire from social change work, what would you do and why? If everything you were fighting for was achieved and you could retire from social change work, what would you do and why? I think Nikki put it there.
We're going to give folks a second to think of it. We know it's a big question. But while folks are doing that and putting in the chat, Iman, do you want to share what you would be doing?
Oh my goodness, I, I was thinking about it today as I was coming into the space. I feel like last time I answered like dance because I had just come off of Beyonce's concert and was just feeling like the energy of all of that. And today I'm really connecting with, it's been a theme actually in this conference as well with grounding with the soil, like gardening. That's really connecting with me, walking on the earth with no shoes on and gardening. For some reason that's, that's pulling at my heart. So I think that's what I would spend my time doing. What about you, Nikki?
Oh, I know. I love, I love because a little bit of it always changes every time we ask this question. So we've asked ourselves this question many times. But I, I think for me today, it is still about sailing. I would be on the waters right now. It's kind of a muggy day in the Bay Area, but I would still be on the water, just sailing around in the bay and then maybe taking some like dips out into the ocean. The whales are coming by California, so I want to go say hi to some of them. And maybe just like pick up a few people along the way and like do this together.
Love it. And I see we're getting some answers in the chat. Swimming laps, reading a novel, knitting a sweater. Lex at the beach jazz club. Yes, continuing public health. Open a free, oh, I love a free restaurant. Yeah.
What kind of food Elaine? What are we eating?
Awesome.
Iman, you're going to supply some of the.
Let's do it.
All right. Thank you. This check-in is going to be here. You're going to probably take a little bit of time to think about this. So just keep the, keep your ideas flowing because we would love to just capture and see it in here and be inspired by what you all will be doing and may be doing already a little bit of right now. All right, while we're, we're sharing about our dreams and visions, I wanted to share a little bit about Leadership Learning Community, LLC. LLC envisions a future rooted in strong movements with thriving leaders and community solidarity filled with abundance, power, joy for all people. We run, fund, study, and we practice leadership here. And our favorite thing and the most important thing we do probably is to create space for convening, play and practice outside of the dominant cultural systems and structures. This space centers people of color, those historically excluded from leadership, those who are catalyzing, doing just work in just ways. And it invites leaders of the social goods sector to move towards collective liberation, which seeks power, joy and thriving for all people. And it took LLC a bit of time to get here. The history of LLC bringing, is we have always brought people together. This, this work was started by Deborah Meehan over 20 years ago. In a, in a context, and if some of you were in the movement 20 to 30 years ago, you'll notice that there was a lot of competition. So leaders of organizations weren't talking to each other, weren't collaborating because they had to fight for funding, very limited funding. They were in competition for funding. It wasn't a collaborative, you know, kind of space. So by creating learning circles, learning communities, it was a way to build more relationships and get to that collaboration. And as we learned more about what, what happens when leaders get together, we learned that there's not just a need for relationship building and collaboration. People really wanted to bring together collective action, you know? And then we talked about, and we learned that not only do these circles need to have collective action together, but a lot of circles need to network together. So we could build more solidarities, more learnings all around. And then as the years gone by, we also knew all this wasn't just for, you know, one siloed issue here and here and here. All this actually is for race equity. That is the end goal, this equity, this justice. And, and now as we have started to see the limitations and understand more, we have evolved our learnings to layer in and inviting movement leaders into liberatory leadership and liberatory practices and collective liberation as well. Simultaneously, LLC's leadership was shifting from the traditional lone leader model. That's like a one ED kind of model to a shared leadership. So we have a co-ED model now and we're also exploring distributed leadership. Today, we are women of color-led. We are diverse staff and board. We are deep with lived experiences and organizing skills. Mostly, we are networked and we are connected to many other people and leaders and organizations who are working towards building a similar future, one which empowers everyone to live dignified lives. And so it's an honor and privilege of being part of many of these collective circles at LLC. One of the, one of the ones we are most proud of is the Liberatory Leadership Partnership. And I'm going to ask Iman to share a little bit more about this partnership.
Happy to. So the Liberatory Leadership Partnership started in 2020. It started as a conversation with Trish Chum from Robert Sterling Clark Foundation and Shiniyari Tudashinda from C2. And then it quickly included Erica Stallings, a co-ED of LLC, and Zuri Tao from Social Insights. And Trish will say she was having a similar conversation in many corners of her work and realized that working together on the questions that needed answering would get us further faster. And so those conversations, as many of you probably remember, 2020, were in response to what we were all so acutely experiencing during that year, the start of the pandemic, the racial reckoning as brought on by the murder of George Floyd. And this time period sparked a renewed understanding that we need an expanded level of intentional transformation and understanding that there was a dire need for a groundswell of more of us moving the ideas of equity forward because it became clear that equity alone without systemic transformation could not lead to our liberation. So these women came together to engage the broader leadership field to center racial justice in leadership. And we continue to come together to harness our black woman magic. We're all black women sitting in that partnership and continue to engage the broader community of folks that are already moving this work to dream, to pre-figure and to build towards liberation. Ways that we engage, or have engaged the community over the past three years, we are always thinking about other ways that we might want to engage the community. But ways that we have done so over the past three years include small group virtual spaces that we called house parties, where we would connect to refine our thinking and understanding with other leaders in the movement, holding space for longer-term community of practice groups for relationship building, continued collective learning and opportunities to experiment together, hosting larger convenings like this one and other webinars. We also, through C2, host the Praxis Power Project, a two-year fellowship for new Black-led organizations to get some support and coaching and connection. We've also hosted regular conversations with funders to encourage them to better understand what an increase in liberatory funding for movement organizations could look like. And we aim to continuously push for clarity and shared understanding by lifting up the work that is happening in the movement already and by getting beyond theory to highlight best practices, tools, frameworks and other resources. One of our early exercises in seeking clarity was to engage in a process led by Social Insights team that helped us to kind of learn on, land on our working definition of liberatory leadership. Just before I go into that definition, I just want to say that we've always stated that this work is emergent. We hold as a core belief that our definition is living and evolving and will continue to be informed by the field. And to that, like even after we completed this process, there's been the like, oh, but it needs a little bit more there. Like it can be too squishy or too theoretical. You know, it needs to be supplemented with applicable tools. And so in various spaces, we're working on doing just that. So it's our hope that in sharing the definition in this space that you can get a sense of how others, how we are approaching that definition, but not to think of it at all as like static or final. And I'm happy to read the definition to you. It can also be found on our website. The landing page of liberatoryleadership.org. I got that right? I was going to go LLC. But the definition reads as, "Liberatory leadership theory and practice invite us to lead from a place of wholeness, love and interdependence. By valuing celebration over competition, we are able to access possibilities that can only emerge in community. The practice of liberatory leadership flourishes when we create space for rest, when we address power differentials in service of justice and when we center those at the margins within our organizations and our work." Thank you, Nikki, for putting that there. If you guys are on the website, you can see there's a read more button. And that takes you to a, a longer list of ways that we think about how liberatory leadership is embodied. And we welcome any feedback or thoughts on that definition, both through the website or here in this space as we keep going. I think that's what I'll say about LLP. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
We have a raised hand.
Awesome. Let's try it out.
Hey.
Hi.
How are y'all?
Doing well. How are you Kyriishi? Great to see you.
I know. I was thinking, I was like, I haven't seen him in a couple of weeks. I went, I did, I'm bouncing around to everybody's sessions and I saw that y'all were talking about things that LLP did. So I said, oh, let me raise my hand. But then I was like, I don't know if this is right up anyways. I, I wanted to be able to speak to some, some of the work. And, you know, for me, my big thing, my big takeaway from all of our work with LLP is, how do we, and I say this all the time, how do we make sure that we are the leaders that we want the world, you know, that match the world that we're trying to create, right? And then in, in all of our attempts and, and it is a destination. It is, it is not a, it is not, and we haven't arrived, right? And so, and I think that, you know, how gracious for Iman to say like, we welcome the feedback because we don't have the answers. We are creating, we are co-creating those answers. And I think a lot of, for us is like asking the question is like, hey, if we want to imagine, I was saying in the session earlier, like if you can't see it, then you can't create it, right? And so if we want to create this world, it doesn't work unless we are able to start envisioning it, right? And I think that is a lot of what LLP is doing is saying, let's start asking the question of people. And we're putting out these things that we're thinking and grappling about and grappling with so that collectively we can, we can start imagining this world, right? So that we, we are actually successful, but it doesn't happen if we can't start thinking about, seeing it first.
That's absolutely right, Kyriishi. That was actually one of the things that I meant to touch on is that we are an experiment. We think of ourselves as like a place where we are like practicing the world that we want to see, the interconnectedness, the collaboration, et cetera. And so you're exactly right. We don't have it right. We're working on it. We're evolving and learning as we go and just are continuing to ask the questions and try to lean in so that we can get there. Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. And you know, this conference is a great way for us to, to touch as many people. And my hope is that as people are engaging the conference, one of the reasons why we have it virtual and we are, will keep it, the sessions visible forever, probably, is because we want you to be able to go back to your organizations and to your cultural groups and whatever and say, hey, let's watch these sessions and let's talk about the things that we've heard, right? So that these, you know, we're not here to stroke our own eagles. We're here so that people can then take this work and start grappling with it themselves and that they too can start, you know, redefining and reimagining the kind of world that they want. But y'all are wonderful. I'm gonna hop off.
Kyriishi, before you leave, I have a question for you.
Okay.
You and Iman. Why don't you all just do this in your own organizations?
Look at you Nikki. Like that's an assist. And with this was basketball, Nikki just threw us an assist.
She did.
I think that that's wonderful because that's a great question because I, I feel like what has happened is you've had entities come together that are practicing liberatory practices and principles in their own organizations, coming together to talk about this. And so, and C2, and I name it all the time, like, like, I think a lot of times the, the practices and policies are happening with people not even naming or knowing that that's what that is, right? So I, 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 in my personality, make it a point to name it so that people can see like, oh no, most organizations don't give you unlimited time off and vacation. That's not a practice. Like there are people who actually can't take off when they're sick because they've used all their time for the, the year, right? Like they can't take off when their parent has passed away or something like that because they don't have the time to do it, right? And so that's one of the practices that we have at C2 is unlimited time off and sick. Another practice, you know, this, to me, this is a great example. Last year, several of us were dealing with like, you know, different various issues and traumas. And then we, C2 gave us support, created a grief group, right? Because, and not to talk about the way grief was happening necessarily in our personal life, but how it was coming into the workplace, right? I, I broke my ankle. I found it very difficult to get to the work because just existing every day was difficult, right? And so while I had my own personal therapist to deal with the Kyriishi stuff, I also had this, the support at work to make space because we're human. I'm human first, right? And to have an organization that cares about my humanity first was powerful.
Very cool. And I'll just, I am thinking about, especially the, the group we started with at the very beginning, our founding group. I think the partnership was thought up to be essential because it helps each of our organizations to add new skill, new thinking, new perspective, new audience to speak to and more importantly, a new audience to learn from. And then we could incorporate that broadened perspective into ways that we continue to engage with our networks and ways that we want to see our movement move, right, and continue to grow. And I think it helps us to be more, well, I think we aim that it helps us to be more responsive to like current needs and like what's actually happening because we have more ears out there coming to a table to kind of think about what, what can we do and what needs are we seeing out in the movement? And then I think in some ways that helps us to be better and to, to evolve more quickly, you know? And so I think at our best, that is what we're thinking the partnership could be. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that assist Nikki.
Can I, can I, can I, before I hop off, can I, can I also add that? So you know, in C2, we are practicing liberatory leadership in various forms. And then we work with the, with LLP to talk and grapple with and deal with liberatory leadership. And then each group in LLP goes back to their own corner to also further the work. And so on our end, you can see it expressed through this conference is an example of the way it's, it meets the needs of our capacity building work as well as liberatory leadership, right? So to ensure that folks out there get, we can't fund everybody, but what we can do is bring together these brilliant minds such as you all, all the, the beautiful panelists and all the thought-provoking ideas and questions and tools and resources so that folks can, can have the help that they need to, to really like vitalize their organizations and their work. And so this, I mean, the conference is an aspect of. And so this, I mean, the conference is an aspect of that. And then the other part of our work is Praxis and Praxis Power. It was Praxis Vision and Praxis Power. And so right now, Iman mentioned that earlier, but we have the Praxis Power cohort. And, and I, I run the Praxis Power cohort. And it is a group of 10 black led organizations. And this time for Praxis Power, they're all base builders, right? And so we give them a re-grant. So we're giving them re-grant funding and we're not the funder, but we're facilitating that these organizations get this funding. And then we also give them ongoing coaching and it's a two-year process. So they get coached in organizational principles. And all of these groups are, are pretty much zero to five years. And we do that because, you know, most organizations fail in the first five years, first four or five years of existence, right? And mostly because we jump into the work. We start organizations because we see a critical need and we want to address the need. But that doesn't mean, especially because of racism and sexism and various forms of oppression, that we have the tools and the information to build strong organizations. And a lot of times we find these organizations fail a lot because of interpersonal issues, right? Or I didn't know how to manage people, right? I didn't know how to create structures and systems. And so that's what we try to do in Praxis Power. So that's our, part of our organization's work, but also our offering to LLP.
Thank you. Thank you both for sharing the history, you know, where, where it has started from. Why are we talking about living liberation today? So through this partnership, it really has given us the enough conversation and enough practice and enough of a platform to be able to continue this conversation wide, in a wider way. And Kyriishi, right there, just actually modeled something we want you all to see. If you raise your hand in this platform, we can put you in in this panel and we can have a conversation together. So we don't have to interact only in chat. If you have something to say, you want to get off, you know, mute, we'd love to invite you onto this panel with us as well. All right. So now you know a little bit about me, a little bit about Iman, you know, a little bit about LLC as an organization, you know, a little bit about LLP, our wonderful partnership that, you know, has, has really catapulted the work of liberatory leadership. We would love to get to know a little bit about you. But before we start, we like to do some group agreements. And because we're playing around with this idea of space travel, time travel, we wanted to ask you, all right, if we're going, well, first of all, has anybody here space traveled before? Anybody? Yeah, it's pretty like hard to do. So at LLC, we like to play as liberatory practice and we like to bring some joy and like fun into the work. So for the remainder of time, what we're going to do is some participation and we are going to do that by space traveling together. And since we, many of us have never space traveled before because it's, and time traveled before because it's not that accessible. We want to ask you, what would be necessary to time travel today? And we'll ask you to put your ideas in the chat. So I'll give you a few examples from LLC's perspective. First of all, you know, you need to have some like PPP, PPE to space travel. Like you just can't like run out of space. You know, there's no oxygen out there. So there's a few things you want to do. For LLC, we want to think about the tempo. We want to slow down for purpose. So warp speed could be a lot, right? So remember to slow down, pause when you need. Let's keep each other accountable to not rushing today. Especially if there's a topic or idea that asks for more clarity, want you to like raise your hand and ask us or put it in the chat or like tap whoever was talking about it and say, can you say, can you say more? So stop the, the conversation for clarity. Stop the conversation for questions. We want to invite that kind of dialogue with you today. Another thing that would be necessary for time travel for us is curiosity. We don't know everybody here and we don't know where you've come from or where you, where you're about to go. So we will, we will be leaning into curiosity to see what emerges. And we also invite you to wonder with us and to also not expect perfection from yourself or from us. Right now, this is a space for the next hour together. We're just gonna be in curiosity and employ together. So we can make some mistakes. We can, we can say something and be like, oh, actually that's not the future spot that I actually landed on. I'm actually over here instead. Invite you to, to do that. And another, another thing that would be necessary is protection. There's a risk to time traveling and we found this over and over again, as we've done this exercise. When we ask folks to imagine, to pre-figure a future that doesn't exist, and maybe on a day like today, you feel like me and you, you think it really will never exist. It's exhausting to ask you to go there. And as you keep that in mind, let's think about how to keep ourselves safe. We're mitigating the risks of the unknown here by keeping an open stance and just playing with it. So we're not going to take ourselves too seriously today. We hope you do the same. We hope you also keep boundaries. You know, you don't have to share everything. Share what you want to share in this moment today. But with that, I wanted to ask, does anybody else have another like group agreement or like thing they need in order to space travel safely? And you can unmute or you can like raise your hand and we'll like push you into the panel so you can say it out loud or you could put it in the chat. Iman, would you add anything? We kind of came up with this together, so.
I love those three. I'll think a little bit.
I'm gonna put it in the chat so you all see what my talking points were. Oxygen. A friend, thank you. Lucia, that's wonderful and beautiful. I'm going to read that as affirmations too. Somebody says something that you thought, yeah, me too. Show them some affirmation. You can put a little emoji to their, to their message or you could tell them, you know, thank you for saying that. All right. Does everybody feel good with the four type of agreements we have going on here so we can travel safely? And I'm going to invite you to like use an emoji in the chat to like say yes. And I think you can, you can use any emoji that you feel like using, so. Give us some feedback. You feel like you can give consent to these, to these. The fourth one would be Lucia's, a friend, oxygen for both of us to last entire duration of this journey. And I'm reading into it as giving some affirmations as well. Good? Is it working out? Are we okay with this? All right. I hope we are. Iman, should we time travel now? Should we? Do we get to it? All right.
Okay. So let's start here in the present. This is where we're going to circle back around to intros. If you can put in the chat your name, pronouns, location, your native land, the native land, anything else you want to tell us about how you identify. We can start there. And then I'm also going to ask if there are any liberatory leadership questions that you're currently holding. And we'll probably do the present in the chat for now. And then maybe in the other spaces, we'll ask for you to come off. Thank you. Thank you. You know, it's been a rich couple of days. There's, you probably came in here with questions. There's probably new liberatory leadership questions that have come up in your conversations or panels that you've heard. Anything you want to bring into this space? Nikki, if you have one, you can also add.
I have a lot of liberatory leadership questions, Iman. That's what I think about all day long. And I don't have answers for most of them.
Yeah.
You know, I think in this grief that I'm hearing right now, I just, I just kind of thinking like when, you know, and why? And I'm reminded though, through conversations like at this conference, that it's the collective liberation that we're seeking isn't necessarily a destination. It's actually a practice. It's a little bit of living it right now in order to practice that future, right? That, that all, all beautiful things have been like that. Somebody has, has tasted it actually before they went there. Like maybe smelled it or like, you know, you just, you had a moment of seeing it. And then you finally like get to it. So I, I'm trying to grapple with that and like tell myself that, and remind myself that liberatory leadership, the reason why we talk about it as a liberatory and not liberation leadership, necessarily is because we want to remind ourselves that it's a practice, a process right now.
Appreciate the intros coming in. Love to get to know the folks in the room.
Nicole, that really resonates with me too. Yeah, I'm so glad that, so this platform is great because they'll record everything and then leave it on this platform. It's so easy to access afterwards. I really appreciate that. So shout out to David and Goliath and shout out to C2 for setting up such a, such a vibrant and rich space for us to have in the moment, but also to like revisit afterwards. Because it's been really rich and it's been really, there's so many like quotes. I'm like, I couldn't even write it in time. I have to review it again. We're great, we have a lot of gratitude for folks in the chat who are participating and kind of sharing some of their insights and feelings right now with us. We feel like you're in the room with us. We feel like you're in the community with us right now. A little less lonely up here.
Yes. The honesty, really appreciate that Lucia. All right. I want to give people space and also, I want to give people space and also want us to keep time traveling. We're in the present. I appreciate folks bringing in also just how you're feeling in this moment. And we can hold each other in those feelings as we continue on in our conversation. So next we would want to go to the past. And it would be awesome if we could have a few volunteers that can come in and add your voice to our space with the prompts that I'm going to share or anything that's on your mind related to the past in this work. The questions that I have for you though are what movements or moments have mattered in your work? Who have you learned from? Let's honor the people, organizations and events that brought you here today. Let's fill the chat and speak them all into this room. You can take your time to collect your thoughts on that. I think we'll put the questions in the chat. Thank you Nikki. And then if folks want to come off mute, lend their voice, but also you can just put in the chat if that feels more comfortable.
We typically do this kind of exercise like on a mural board or in a padlet. And today we're going to try to like go as low tech as possible and just fill this chat with people who have given us, you know, the inspiration and the knowledge and wisdom and maybe the affirmation and the encouragement to keep going forward in our inquiries.
I love that Nikki. I've been thinking a lot about my grandmother in this space lately. Oh, your hand's raised. I don't see it. Thank you for break. There we go. Sorry Nicole. Thank you. Didn't let you in. I thought I said, got it. Hold on one second. Oh, here we go.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? Um, I love this. I'm, I'm glad there's some like interaction because I feel like a lot of the stuff I've been like thinking about as this conference has been happening, I feel like it needed to be kind of like full circle for me to like engage and interact in the conversation versus just like, I'm thinking about all these things. So thank you both for inviting an opportunity to participate in this way. I don't like to be in my head a lot when I'm thinking of very like profound things. I'm like, I need to just speak it out, say it, share it. And yeah, have some time to reflect. These are really great questions. I think for me, it's definitely thinking of my own like trauma and experiences, but also family. Instantly think of my mom. She was a single parent raising 11 children and really that's kind of a both and, like not having the best relationship, but understanding the sacrifice of having to take on that responsibility just as a parent, as a mother. And that's one role that she had, but also realizing what she didn't have in terms of the support that she needed. I think about that a lot now in the work that I do as an environmental educator, but also just as a human being and what that means for me. Being able to show her wellness, like how I take care of myself, but then also like we need to revisit a lot of conversations that we didn't have the opportunity to have because we were in survival mode, but it's still very important, even though it might be uncomfortable. And it's a form of reconnecting, but also just sharing each other's stories and dreams and interests and kind of ways that we can uplift each other. But also, you know, I can't expect her to be everything for me. And really hoping that I can continue to have more of those conversations with her. Although they might be challenging, I feel like it's an opportunity for me to revisit those moments in time where I didn't, I guess, get the full picture of her sacrifice, but also just what it means to be in the present moment, what it means to, to live, to thrive, to live in a space that's nurturing, that's supportive, that's loving. And also, I don't, I don't know if this makes sense, but thinking about the people that harmed me, I don't, I don't know if this makes sense, but thinking about the people that harmed me. The lessons that I learned from those relationships and realizing what I wasn't seeking in order to have a healthy relationship with, with people or community. Even I think it just, although tragic and very depleting, those experiences and very much scary and unsafe, I think I learned a lot about what does make for a healthy relationship, what makes me happy, what makes me joyous, what makes me feel more open to loving other people. So, yeah, so that's kind of where I am with, with that question. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Nicole. I really appreciate that. The vulnerability and you're tying in like the past, present, and future with like you just took us on the travel with all of that. So really appreciate that. And the, and the idea about evolution and learning and how we can learn from painful points too. And how we can help bring other folks along, like you said, talking to my mom about self-care and getting past surviving that. It was beautiful. Thank you for sharing. And thank you for modeling coming off too. And that's awesome. Really appreciate it.
This is, this is the, the, the prac, the continue practicing kind of conversation I have with myself. I mentioned that I'm an introvert, but I'm working towards embracing the different versions of myself. That again, it has to do with speaking your truth and acknowledging that as mentioned many times, we're not monoliths. So although I'm an introvert, I, I do feel like the, a part of it is needing connection and wanting to share and not hold things in because I'm an introvert, but more so more, it's more just, I just need a time to recharge and get my battery back to 100% versus not wanting to connect at all.
Absolutely here with you on that. Yeah, thank you. Nikki, were you gonna say something? I saw you come off mute.
Nicole, I'm just so grateful too, because that last part, when you said, think, you know, learning from even the folks who have done harm, like and naming the complexities of the people who care for us and love us and who, who we might want to honor still. I, I just really appreciate that because that complexity, that the ability to see the nuance and still see the beauty in the path forward. I think that's the inner work that we've been asking ourselves to do, right? To like, and to honor, and it's like, it honors other people, but I, I hope you feel it, like it honors ourselves as well too. So I'm just, I'm so grateful for you bringing that up and in our space travels to the past, that we get to bring this up in a way that feels so, you know, so achievable, so power, empowering, so possible.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to note that it's okay to step back in order to step forward. Because sometimes we don't realize how connected our, our past are to our present and even thinking about moving forward because we don't know what tomorrow brings, but there's still opportunity there to, to be in the moment, but also think about, you know, what things could be moving forward and just again, having those support systems is really important and that's going to look different throughout your lifetime. It's not a one size fits all or an across the board type of setup. So I feel like at this, I'm in my thirties, but like thinking more about a lot of these like full circle moments where I'm just like, okay, I want to avoid this part of my life and don't acknowledge it and don't give myself space and time and breath to like really think about the lessons those past experiences are teaching me, but also there is a time and a place for that. I might not, I mean, in those situations, you know, there might not have been a lesson right then and there, but you know, five, 10, 15 years later, something happens to where, okay, it's taking you back to that moment because it's teaching you the lesson for now versus from, from in that moment. And I'm, I'm realizing how much more I, I wasn't loving myself first in order to get through this journey of, you know, life, because none of us know what we're doing. We didn't, none of us had a blueprint of any sort or instructions coming into this life. And I have to remind myself that, you know, every day is a new day, but also to, it's okay to not, you know, feel, I don't know, I, I have moments where I feel disconnected, but also it's because I'm feeling disconnected, I have an understanding of, okay, I don't feel like myself. And this isn't bringing me understanding, because again, it's a, it's a form, I don't know, we get into these moments where we're just needing distractions and to escape and again, that prevents us from actually dealing with the feelings in the moment and understanding the different roles that we have. There's, you know, we wear so many different hats. And we can show up in so many different ways, but then are we really giving time and space to those different ways that we show up and being okay and giving it grace and, you know, not getting so caught up in the ego of it, but really just, it's, it's a part of our being, it's a part of who we are, but reminding myself to check in as much as possible because it's, you know, there was a time where I was completely checked out because of my, my trauma and I was just an empty vessel. Kind of shell of myself, and that's where I felt the most lost and uncertain. But then when I brought more of the, the joy and the curiosity and the excitement of possibility into my life, I think I had so much more clarity of what, what openness and what more I could bring into my life and not even like having a, a plan or like a set thing that I wanted to work towards, but it just brought more light into my life to where I'm like, okay, I can daydream more, I can create more. I can give myself more possibility and not focus on the, what I don't have versus what I do have and yeah, so I guess in so many words, I'm just, I feel like I'm just starting. Even though I'm in my thirties, like I'm going back to this, the importance of healing, like a healing journey, that it's lifelong and that it's not for a moment, but it's for a lifetime and forever long I'm here. I've just gotten to this point of, I, I think my biggest fear is not knowing myself. So if I could trust that more than I'm like, okay, I don't, it doesn't matter, you know, if I have a job that's paying well or food on the table or like, I, I feel like in those situations, yes, those are very immediate needs, things that we, we need, but then I, I don't know, I feel like there's this emptiness if I don't know myself, even in, you know, being in survival mode, like I feel like there's, that's a huge gap that prevents us from connecting more with self and more with other people in a more loving and nurturing way.
Absolutely.
Wow. I feel like this dialogue is just like reflective of so many of our inner dialogues, right? Like whether it, it's like today or yesterday or 10 years ago. I feel like a lot of folks are probably grappling with the same dialogue. I know I am. And with that, I'm curious, you know, Nicole, you modeled something here. You joined us, you're on the panel, you're in conversation with us. I'm curious if anybody else is interested in just coming on to this panel and being in conversation together. Because I want to invite us to warp speed again, you know, we, we talked a little bit of the past, the, the people, the moments that have gotten us here. I'm really amazed by this group here because a lot of folks said like their parents or families, you know, bringing in deep lineage and relationships. Sometimes when we do this exercise, people bring in like, you know, just political figures and, and random people they've never met in real life or don't know too well in real life. So this is a really cool group here. You know, you guys got it like snatched down to exactly who it is for you. But as we want to warp speed to the future and we want to ask you to like warp speed to a future where liberation might be realized already, if it's possible for you. So it might be, you know, a different future timeframe that we land on everybody's might, somebody might be like 10 years, I'm going to be there. Somebody might be like, it's going to be two million years away and it's going to look like somewhere in this outer space realm. That's okay, but we're, we want you to land somewhere. And so as we're getting into this future, if you're interested in, in being, having this conversation, like thinking through some of these things with us, please raise your hand. We'll put you onto the panel. Nicole, if you want to stay here, invite you to stay here. If you want to go back down, we'll, we'll put you back down. Let us know.
Yeah, I think I'll stick around a little bit. I'm just going to mute myself.
Awesome.
Thank you again.
As we're going into this future, we have some questions for you. What does liberation feel like? Will you tell us? What do you see? What do you hear? You know, who is with you at this time? We, we might want to like sit and ground and take a deep breath to get there. What is, and then once we understand what is happening in this liberated future, will you tell us what is needed to amplify to get here? Like what do we need to know? People of the, you know, the, that aren't in the future yet, what do they need to know to get to this future? What do they have to let go of perhaps to get to this future? And we'd love to hear and kind of build this future together with you.
And I'll just state that thank you, Nicole, for staying. Other people can raise their hand and come in. There's no limit on how many of these squares can be here. There might be a limit, but, but we won't reach it.
I had to take like a deep breath and actually re-ground myself to even get to this place. You know, the place I'm landing on, it's like lush. It's lush and the water is clean. There's music. There's movement. I'm still on a sailboat. Are you noticing anything, Nicole, and Iman and folks in the, folks in the chat, oxygen, yes? Clean air?
Yeah, I would say it's just, I feel like any, anything that nature uses to help us stay alive, but also, yeah, just the nurturing characteristics from nature. I feel like it's another way to tune into relationship building is building a relationship with, with nature and it being such a life force in so many different ways. But also, yeah, the very basics, like just, I don't know, when you said, I'm literally thinking the fact that we have trees to give us oxygen, that is not a small feat.
Erica's in the chat. She said friends. Abundance. Say more, Kyle. Abundance of what? Oh, Lucia, like all the way in worry, fear, and your shoulders are gone. Oh, yeah. Abundance of everything we need. Love, holding on, holding on another near laughter, music. Thank you, Bella. Lush nature, trees. Yes, Nico, we're going to be there together. Laughter, releasing restraint and judgment. Thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, I love what Erica just mentioned. I remember that I'm connected, not alienated and alone. Nature reminds me of that as a lot of moments where I'm like, ah, it's just me going through things really hard and yeah, it's hard to like focus on the, the good of the connections that we already have. Society teaches us the opposite, that we need, you know, more competition or we need to be against each other and not working in community and being of support to one another.
Fuck, am I saying your name right? Feel free to come up on the panel if you want to talk to us too, but I love that you put in mountains. Because it's like diversifying this landscape. It's giving it texture. And as folks are still thinking through, would really want you to invite you to put it in here because I think we're going to try our best to like collect this and repost it so you can kind of see and come visit again, the space that we're building together, this future that we're talking about. But what I'm starting to notice is this future we're talking about exists, right? It's like, yeah, there are places, it might not exist all at once, like any given day, but there are places with diversity and landscape right now. There are places with clean water right now that we can keep preserving. There are places with clean air right now that we can keep preserving. I'm grateful to have that, to know that there is some corner somewhere with something. And maybe in the past, a lot more of earth was like that. And something that, um, all right. Yes, the sounds of children playing, Deborah, I know you're taking, I know you have some little ones near you too, so definitely the joyous sounds of little ones.
Love the inner collective care piece too. Love that.
All right, Nicole, any, any last thoughts on you on our collective future? We're going to pop you back to the, the group and we're going to start sharing some of our learnings to wrap up today's conversation.
Well, thank you again for having me be a part of this conversation. And yeah, I think liberation for me certainly is, I'm not sure who mentioned, but feeling free of worry and, you know, knowing that I can just be creative in my thoughts and thinking more about rest and restoration of, of my body, mind, and soul. As well as spirit and just having enough energy and love to support someone else. I, I, depletion, I think, was the other thing I was, you know, feeling so depleted that you can't offer something to someone else. That's a need. I definitely want to see less of that in, in the future. So, yeah, thank you again.
Oh my gosh, I love that so much. The idea that like liberated abundant space for you is a space where you can also share out back. I mean, that resonates deeply with me. Like I said, being a daughter of refugees, you gotta do that, like quit, you know, figure out what's happening because you don't, nobody understands the language and context, but you gotta like bring your people with you too. You can't just, you just can't be the one that wins and like gets to go off and live in a better life. You gotta bring everybody with you. So thank you, Nicole, for helping us shape this future together and see our past together. Iman, we're not gonna, we're out of time traveling. We, we wanted to bring in this activity because so rarely do we get to pause to examine, you know, where we've come from, where we are, where we're going. And I, I know it doesn't get to like exactly like how to do all this, but I think it is a good reminder to name and to see like in an exercise like this, just like in our check-in question of like, now that you've retired from all your social good work, because now that you've retired from all your social good work because things are good, what would you do? We've asked dozens and dozens of leaders this, and in our journey of asking dozens of leaders this, what we've found is what the imagination, our best, most radical imaginations provide for us is that um, there are things that provide for good societies, like a former physician is gonna keep helping people feel better. You know, people are gonna garden and create food and, and do that labor so that others can eat. Um, people are gonna be, you know, tr, you know, moving from one place to another, whether it's by sailboat or some folks have said biking to us, some folks wanted to run more. You know, they're gonna be able to carry things along the way and, and transport things. Um, we've talked about people who want to go back to music, you know, we would have music and art back into our world. All of these dreams that we have, if we were not held up in these systems and trying to fix these systems all the time are actually things that create really vibrant and beautiful and, and safe communities and environments in the world. And so the realization for us is, yes, we are living liberation because these, these ideas and these practices are in the hearts of many, many people and leaders that we interact with every day. So we have to just know that it's happening. We have to know that it is in our human nature, not just to create wars and deal with conflict in these awful ways. It also is in our human nature to create really beautiful societies and beautiful communities for each other. And like Nicole said, you know, like abundance means like you can actually share with others and bring others along. I, I really believe in that clearly, and I think this community that we have here is demonstrating that. We have a little time, so I'm curious, Iman, do you, what, what are some of your reflections on our conversation today? And then I'll pivot us to share a few like tangible things that LOC does to operationalize leadership in our organization. And I want to make sure folks get a few like tangible things that they can take away and like where they can find resources as well.
Awesome, Nikki, you touched on so many that are resonating with me right now. Um, but what's standing out that I don't think you touched on is, um, like the power of this exercise. You have led me in it a couple of times. And in some ways, it feels like a meditation of like a re-grounding into those core things that you brought up and all of us have surfaced here. Um, and I just wonder how we can bring it more into, um, like a, a steady beat in terms of how we refocus our movement and refocus our work. Um, because all of the other things are like constantly there and overbearing on us. And so just like having the steady beat of the reminder of this is what's real, this is what we all know is real instinctively, um, just feels very powerful. So thanks again, even though I was on the journey with you in this way, thanks again for that reminder.
You all have to know that Iman does the same thing for me as many of our team members do for each other. And we have some of our team members in the attendees, um, group right now. So shout out to my co-ED Erica Stallings as well, but also to some of our staff and like leaders at our team, Alex and Kyle and Sadita. Iman just jumped on this panel like last minute last night, basically. We're like, hey, would you like to be part of this panel? Um, so this conversation is also really fulfilling for me. Um, I think that steady beat you're talking about is the work that LOC is trying to do. Um, and so if you all are craving this kind of space, um, we actually host for folks who identify as BIPOC, you know, Black, Indigenous, people of color, we host a BIPOC affinity group, um, every month. We have conversations like this, they're really interactive. It's a place of connection for folks. It started off as a place of like, oh, like Go to York, how do we? And then now it's like, we don't have to talk about Go to York anymore because we all got it. We're gonna talk about other parts of our lives that need like tending to and need, you know, connections for. So, uh, invite you to our BIPOC affinity group if you're seeking stuff, you know, conversations like this, um, to keep that steady beat going. Um, and it's just some dope people that come to those meetings. And I want to offer a few other tools that LOC offers. So like, you know, we have webinars and we have conversations that also are archived and leadershiplearning.org, that's our organization's website. So you can check those out. Um, we write blogs very frequently and we talk about learning in public is kind of how we frame it. So things that we practice in our own organization, we try to share out. So there's some resources for you to, to get tangible, you know, next steps if you're trying to operationalize some of this leadership and liberatory stance in your organization. Um, some of the things that are bringing us a lot of joy that you can find on our, our resources includes playing, playing at work as a liberatory practice, you know, something like silly like, you know, space traveling as an activity rather than tell me about, you know, your, your dreams, Iman. It's like, I think that's actually pretty nice too, but you know, you can have a little fun twist to it. You can get into a creative mode so that there's a little bit more um, ability to mess up, a little bit more ability to try something on that you normally wouldn't try. Like, I really appreciate Nicole for jumping in here because I feel like that's an extra, introverts like nightmare to, uh, just ran, jump into a panel with strangers, um, but you did it and it was so insightful and so much of your words were what I was thinking inside my head too. So I'm like, oh, thank you, somebody articulated and I could just listen to it instead. Um, so that steady beat happens in community, happens in places like LOC, but also happens in many, many other spaces, um, in our world. So I'm hoping you seek it out and hoping you create it. And if you need help creating it, um, we have some resources on our website as well, um, for you to do that. Um, part of this, this, um, Living Liberation Conference also has some recordings to it. And so, um, there is recording on how to incorporate play into your work. Um, another thing that LOC is also practicing is co-leadership. So to us, shared leadership and co-ED models. So Erica Stallings and myself are co-EDs of liberatory leadership learning community right now. A lot of folks like to ask us about like how that's going, what are some of our practices? Um, if you're interested in a co-ED model and you're trying to explore if that's right for your organization or for you, um, we'll be happy to get on a one-on-one conversation with you to share our experiences so far and our learnings in being in communication and in partnerships with others who are also in this co-ED model. Um, and I think you've heard it throughout this, these sessions before, but the idea of distributed leadership is a really powerful idea that not only, you know, it's nice to, you know, have more leaderful, um, peop, you know, organizations, but it actually is a power building tool. Right? We're talking about, right now, we have a lot of folks interested in social movement work. We have lots of folks interested in what the political future and the mo, the democratic future of this country is, as we should be very intensive, especially in the upcoming year. Um, distributed leadership allows more people to step into power and practice that power. And it allows more people to practice seeding power, letting go of some power. And that is hard work, you know, you can, you can do it in many ways, but if you have an organization right now, if you have the ability, I, 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 I implore you to explore the idea of distributed leadership in your organization. And LOC, we're, we don't got it like 100%. We're fig, we're trying to figure it out as we go, right? But so far, the, this, this journey towards distributed leadership has been such a beautiful journey for us and such an empowering journey. And Iman, Erica, I don't know if you want to add anything to kind of how our leadership has morphed throughout. And I think Deborah might be on here too, our, our founder. If you all want to share anything else about our story and how that journey has evolved for you, I would love to get your insights here as well. See, Iman, Erica isn't on the panel yet, so you can't just wait for her.
I would say, I, I was just waiting for Erica to jump in. It's so interesting. Um, we're actually in the process of like thinking about the learning around distributed leadership, Kyle and I, Kyle, who's a peer of mine who I believe is on as well, but also not jumping in immediately. And, um, all of the bright spots and one of the things that's been resonating with us is just how we help each other be better by sharing leadership. Right? Like we have a, a understanding that each of our perspectives helps whatever the end product is to be its best. Um, and that has been our experience. And also agreeing with you, Nikki, that like there are still questions. We're still learning and we, what makes it work is that we are open to learning and open to slowing down to say, is this the right way? Should we reconfigure the way we're thinking about it or add in the necessary support that helps it to be exactly what we want it to be or get closer to being exactly what we want it to be? Um, and in that way, it feels like a safe way to experiment, right? Because we are having those explicit conversations as opposed to saying we have the answer and let's just go forward with it. Um, so yeah, that's what I'll add now. I'd love for other folks to, other shy folks to come in who are having the experience too, if they want.
I also want to see if folks have, um, questions about liberatory leadership or questions about some of the work that and practices LOC has. We'd love to use this time to answer those questions or get it more interactive as well. We have about five more minutes and then maybe we'll close.
And I also saw that Erica raised her hand, but I don't see her. So I don't know if she's on her way. Or if she changed her mind. But both things are true. If there are questions, please. Got it.
I'm just gonna like shout out to some of the Common Council people who are here because they're my former core colleagues. It's so nice to see them.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention to the chat. I was just trying to catch up to see if there was a question in there.
Iman, let's close out the panel.
Sounds good to me.
I have a lot of gratitude for all the space that has been created. And, and I think we've mentioned it, some folks have mentioned in the chat too. It's been a lot to, um, absorb and take in in today's, especially even for us, like we, we talk about this stuff all day long. This is like our, we, we pivoted our mission to just like focus on liberatory leadership and liberatory practices. Um, but I wonder for you, Iman, like what's one takeaway that has been like staying with you? And what's our, like a gratitude that you might have for this lesson that you've received?
Wow, like one takeaway, you're asking me to get down to one after, after these after these rich days. I think I always come back to, and it's been a theme in our conversation too, the, um, like collaborative and interconnected piece. Just how how isolated we are in this society that we currently live in and how important it is to get back to the core understanding of our interconnectedness, interconnectedness and, um, that by collaborating, we will get to the place that we want to be. Um, I, I'm feeling that both in the words that I'm hearing in each of the spaces I've been in and just in the actual connection. So thank you to everybody who's been a part of this time and a part of adding to that.
Um, I'll close by gratitude and, and reflect back that the learning that is really, really clear for me today is that we have the potential already, we have the knowledge already, we have the assets and the power already to, to enable transformation. We really, really do. And, um, and we actually are able to live some of our liberation now and practice it now. So, um, my invitation and my request for everyone who joined today and has been joining this, these conversations is to try to practice your liberation, try to hang on and practice your joy. It is completely essential for us to have those futures that we have in imagining. We have to actually, um, be joyful and be in liberated, liberated lives right now. So, um, it, in that's how my cup is filling, filled right now. So thank you so much. Alright, thank you, everyone. I think we've ended five minutes early, which is a skill set for us. To end on time and end a little early, I hope you all get to see the closing panel. I believe there's, there's one little closing panel, but feel free to take a break. You know, get some water, take care of yourselves. We really, really have enjoyed, um, being in community with you and getting to know you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you.